Good afternoon. The Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting is today on March the 9th, and we'll start off with introductions of the dais.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Kristy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. So, welcome. We will start with a silent prayer, and certainly there are a lot of things for us to pray about. I would just ask to keep Bernardette Watson, who's been major community leader, former Avondale Community Council President, former Chief of Staff for former Mayor Charlie Lukin, and also is one of our appointees on the CMH Board, and also was on the Revitalization Board of Union Terminal Revitalization. She lost her son, her and Thomas Watson, late last night. And just please keep them in prayer along with others as we pray today. Thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
We have a public hearing that was scheduled for 1:15. We're going to advance that now and go into the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for having us in here. This is regarding home ARP funding, which is a unique piece of funding from the government, one-time, budgeted line from the American Rescue Plan, through HUD, on the special version of the government program. Today, you will hear our board of consultants for the National Development Council, Patricia Santa Cruz, she should be joining us through Zoom. And then we'll have opportunity to input, and this will appear on next week's agenda.
For an actual resolution to pass the allocation plan.
Okay.
So if we can get Patty to come through on Zoom.
Hi. Hi, how are you? Welcome.
Hi. Hi, everyone. Let me see if I can share my screen here.
There it is.
Hello, everyone. My name is Patricia Santa Cruz, and I'm Field Director with the National Development Council. Pleased to be here today on behalf of Planning and Development Department of Hamilton County to talk about the Home ARP Allocation Plan and open this public hearing. NDC was engaged by Hamilton County to assist with the development of this plan. So I have a few slides for you, and I'll get started and then answer any questions you all may have. So the American Rescue Plan Act, also called ARPA, included $5 billion nationwide to be allocated by HUD through the Home Investment Partnerships Program. Hamilton County received $5.4 million. This is a one-time funding opportunity that is separate from the county's annual home program allocation. The funding must primarily benefit qualifying populations, and the funding must be spent by 2030. So who are the Home ARP qualifying populations? These are persons currently experiencing homelessness, people that are at risk of homelessness, people fleeing domestic violence, victims of assault, stalking, and human trafficking, and others requiring assistance to prevent homelessness or who are at a great risk of housing instability. These are the qualifying populations that must be primarily served through the Home ARP funds. The eligible uses of these funds include development, acquisition, or construction, or rehab of affordable rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services such as homelessness prevention, case management, legal services, education services, and others, non-congregate emergency shelter, and then nonprofit operating and capacity building assistance. Those categories are limited to 5% of the budget each, and then administration and planning has a cap of 15%. So in the development of this plan, NDC began working with Hamilton County in December 2022 to work with them to ensure that they meet all of the following requirements as required by HUD. To start this plan, we must, Hamilton County needed to consult with required agencies and service providers, and these are providers and organizations that work with the qualifying populations, so such as the Continuum of Care Strategies to End Homelessness and Public Housing Authorities and those service providers that are providing services to those qualifying populations. We also needed to complete a needs assessment and a gap analysis for all of the qualifying populations. As part of this plan, as part of the requirements, Hamilton County is required to make a public notification of the amount of the Home ARP allocation and the range of activities that must be undertaken, and that was done beginning on February 18th, beginning on February 18th, and provide for a public comment period of at least 15 days and hold a public hearing, which we are doing today. And then in the development of the plan, which has already been posted to the Hamilton County's website, we must describe the Home ARP activities, the Home ARP housing production goals, and identify if any preferences or referral methods were going to be used for any of the categories. And Hamilton County, as with all other grantees, are required to submit the plan to HUD no later than March 31st, 2023, or they would basically be forfeiting the fund. So a plan is due by that date. So a little bit about the consultation that has taken place. Hamilton County consulted with the following agencies and groups as part of the development of this proposed plan. So the COC serving the jurisdiction's geographic area, so that is Strategies to End Homelessness, the homeless and domestic violence service providers, veterans groups, public housing agencies, and again, public agencies that address the needs of the qualifying populations, and other organizations that address fair housing, civil rights, and the needs of persons with disabilities. As I mentioned, the project kicked off in December 2022. From December through February, we conducted a needs assessment and gaps analysis for the qualifying populations and also continued to conduct stakeholder engagement with those providers, which I just spoke of. We made the draft plan available by February 18th. Today, we're holding the public hearing on March 9th, and the public comment period will close next, actually, next Wednesday, March 15th, and then Commissioners will consider this plan for adoption next Thursday, March 16th. And again, the plan must be submitted to HUD no later than March 31st. And here, I will talk a little bit about the survey that we opened in January, at the end of January, that was closed, that's closing as of today. So some of the feedback and data, feedback that we received through the stakeholder engagement was that funding is needed to provide supportive services for the qualifying populations. We heard from a number of service providers serving these populations that there's just an additional need for that, which is allowed under the Home ARP plan. We also heard that there is a need for the development of new affordable rental housing and operating expenses for the nonprofits to serve the qualifying populations. As of March 2nd, we have received 66 survey responses through the Survey Monkey that was out and is out through today. And the priorities through those surveys, we heard, were the development of new affordable rental housing and preserving, repairing existing affordable rental housing and supportive service funding. And the data that we looked at, and this is data that we received from the Continuum of Care, some of the data we looked at was the point-in-time count from 2022, the number of the housing inventory count for these qualifying populations. We also looked at census data, American Community Census data for 2015 to 2019. And as you can imagine, the data shows that there is an insufficient number of shelters bed for the homelessness and for homeless and an insufficient number of available affordable rental housing units for all qualifying populations. And I do want to note that all of the shelters or the majority of the shelters that serve this jurisdiction are located in Cincinnati and not out beyond in Hamilton County. So people that are experiencing homelessness usually have to get to Cincinnati if they're looking for emergency shelter. So after the consultation and reviewing the data, Hamilton County is proposing to use the Home ARP funding as follows. For supportive services, $1 million. For the development of affordable rental housing, $3.7 million. $273,000 for nonprofit operating expenses, which is the maximum statutory limit that is allowed to be expended for that category. And administration and planning proposing to fund at $491,000. This is 7%, and 15% is allowed. And keeping in mind that the admin and planning, that 495, 491,000 would be for the full administration, and these funds must be used by 2030. So it would cover more than, you know, one to two fiscal years. And the activities that are identified here as proposed are proposed to be selected through a competitive request for proposals or a request for application process. And that concludes my presentation. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions that I'll open up for my colleagues. When you said this, we have until 2030 to spend it, and when I'm looking at these buckets and based on the need of affordable housing, rental housing development, supportive services, how realistic is that to go over multi-years? Because it seems like that could be utilized in one fiscal year.
That's correct. But I think HUD wanted to give folks time to get these funds out because of all the other funding streams that are happening right now. But our intent would be to get this funding out sooner rather than later, probably in the next couple of years because of the current need. So we anticipate not taking our time and spreading this out over that seven-year period, but maybe in the next three to four years have all that money out. So we might meet the deadline and also meet the need that's out there right now.
Gotcha. And under the supportive services of $1 million, I don't know if this was the grant, because I know we're getting a lot of different grants, but when we had the coalition to end homelessness, seemed to be hand-tied on what, he kept saying that his hands were tied in terms of what he's able to do. And, you know, I always said I had an issue that we would be upstairs approving millions of dollars and then go down the elevator. And people out there who need help now, I know they, I was told that streetwalkers or people that can help ambassadors would not be allowable. Is this the grant, they said a grant was coming that would allow flexibility? Is this the one?
I believe that is the case. I think that is what we heard, is that there's some gap still in particularly the folks that are on the street that could use additional assistance. And so that's why we did want to make sure we carved out that million for those kind of supportive services for the folks we see just outside our building.
Gotcha. Well, I just wanted to make clear that that's something, I don't know the minister, I don't know what that process is, but it's just, I mean, it's mind-blowing that we stand up here and say, "Oh, we did this to end homelessness." We go down the elevator and laying around everywhere saying, "We need help." And then, you know, can't pat ourselves on the back up here, and then we get to the streets, even in front of our own building, we don't see anybody walking around trying to help anybody. So how, Mr. Ludo, how would this be helpful? Or how can we make sure that that, we got somebody, I want to see somebody with a T-shirt or something, with an iPad or something, walking around and be able to see some of the money that was spent?
So I think there's a couple of things here. First is, number one, working, continuing to work with planning and community development on these specific supportive services to make sure that as these are put out there, whether it's going to be, whether it's going to be competitively or through a sub-recipient agreement, we target specific services for folks that, for the types of needs that we know we have for these folks. I would also say that when Strategies to End Homelessness, when Mr. Finn was in here a couple of weeks ago, he had also provided some information, which I forwarded to the board, about some additional work that's going on between Strategies, 3CDC, and Mental Health Recovery Services Board to provide some additional funding to make sure that the folks who are out there, who can approach those folks, have the tools they need in order to get these people to the type of help they need. I think what he would, Mr. Finn was saying when he was here was that the funding, to your point, Commissioner, the funding that he was getting right now was very limited to the subject of housing, and that he couldn't put people out on the street that had the tools to give those, get those people into the wraparound services they need. But through this grant, through the work they're doing with Mental Health Recovery Services Board, we'll be remedying that. So I think we'll stay in touch with community development on these specific services and also follow up on that other work with mental health to make sure we get some support out here on the Court, in the Court Street area as well.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure he had mentioned that there was a grant possibility that would help us do this. I just want to be on the record today that I want to see something. I want to see, it's hard for me to see when I go down the elevator. And upstairs, I voted for millions, and downstairs, I got lots of people walking around. I do see people sweeping. I do see people picking up the trash, but I don't see that other piece. And I just wanted to make sure, they had mentioned one of these grants. I didn't know if it was this one, but I do want to put on the table that as we're doing all these things, we've got a lot of grants going on. I'm the type of person, I'm like a secret shopper. I want to see what we're doing. Not saying we're not doing anything, but I want to be able to see, and I can testify to say, "No, I saw people doing this, that." I can testify that people are sweeping, people are power washing, people are picking up trash, but I cannot testify that I see anybody with all these people. They should be coming to me. I should be able to give them to the people that has the expertise, because I don't have the wraparound services in my pocket myself. But they're asking me for help, and I want to make sure that what I'm funding is actually helping the people. So I just wanted to put that on the table. I don't know if we're at that point, but as we move to the next level, I wanted to have that. I appreciate Mr. Finn letting us know that his funding is restricted and limited and that there may be some other things that provide flexibility. Vice President Treehouse?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So can you help us understand how these dollars that are being utilized for affordable housing might interface with the dollars that we've set aside and given to CDF for also affordable housing? And what the expectation is about how these two things fold together?
Yes. So I believe the ARPA money that came to the county and now is at CDF had its own strings and goals attached to it, more for the provision of affordable housing generally. These are this unusual hybrid between what we typically know as home and ESG funding. So these are targeted purely for places with supportive services. So these buckets where the 3.4 for affordable housing would be for places that have staff onsite to help folks in those transitions from homelessness to getting back on their feet. Whereas I would imagine many of the projects that CDF is going to fund are more income-qualified for people that are either seniors or people that have low-income jobs, all those kind of things. So this will be complimentary, I would say.
Can I, just to follow up on that then? So the funding here through the home dollars, is it for construction or is it for supportive services for the agencies that are already, already have that established?
Right, so the 3.4 million would be for construction of affordable units but that have supportive services attached to them. And then the 1 million is for supportive services, like what President Reese had mentioned, for more of the wraparound services, things that are currently a gap that we found during our study for this plan.
Okay, great. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation and for the young lady who presented. So no questions necessarily about that, but she made, I think, a poignant statement as it relates to homelessness and that the rescue homelessness facilities are within the city limits. Emergency housing is in the city limits. And even, I had investigated that domestic violence, emergency housing is all within the city limits. So we need to look at that as a board, and do we need to purchase a building or have a available place outs? Because we know homeless is not, homelessness is not just here in the city limits. It's all over. I will also indicate that Mr. Finn did give me the additional information as relates to not only the many partners that are helping homeless. So we're doing great things with homelessness, but it's always much more to do. And he also explained to me where those monies were going. So I want to say publicly, since I said publicly for him to give it to me, that he did provide me what we needed. But if there's one person on the street, that's one too many. But I thank you so much for this information.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We do have one, I think, we do have one speaker on this, during this public hearing, is Matthew. Is it Hors-Jay's? Please, tell me how to say it correctly. I don't want to mispronounce your name.
It's Horsch, Madam President.
Horsch, okay. Welcome. You have two minutes.
My name is Matt Horsch, and I'm, I sit on the COC's Board for our community. And I also, I, my seat is in representation of individuals who participate in and serve those who work with our rapid rehousing programs for affordable housing for individuals that can provide subsidies of up to two years to help them enter and maintain housing. I'm also here as part of my work at Shelter House. I'm the Director of Continuous Quality Improvement. I work with DATA, I work with three housing navigators, and we have a great team there. And I'm here today, I wanted to underline some of what makes this home ARP opportunity a little bit different than what we've seen previously. So the COC receives about $26 million to provide subsidies in rents and also supportive services and administrative costs for our various programs that do rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, and coordinated entry and planning for our community. And one thing that HUD is not allowed for many years with the COC funding is increases in supportive services, not once. We have a program at Shelter House. It's called the Homeless Individuals Partnership Program. We receive $251,769. To my knowledge, that is the same allocation we received in 2004. And so these services are incredibly valuable, and yet HUD doesn't increase those amounts. I am frontline, gung-ho, really in favor of affordable housing in our community. It's wonderful. Workforce housing can be a dirty word sometimes. You want to make sure you're targeting the folks with low incomes. But what is super important is that we utilize this opportunity to focus on supportive services funding perhaps even more than a million. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Did you want to?
No, Madam Chair, I was just wondering, was there anything significant that he needed to add to his statement, even though he only got two minutes? I thought his information was just so interesting.
Were you done?
Well, I'm happy to keep going because...
Oh, we don't want to, we don't want to.
Excuse me. You haven't read my emails.
You can contact our offices. You can contact our offices. You can contact our office, we can get your information. Do you have something in writing?
I'd be happy to submit something. One thing was, I did have difficulty finding the plan on the website.
Okay.
So I mean, if the full plan is there, that'd be, that'd be really helpful. But it's very helpful to be here and speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for being here.
And thank you, guys. You guys were really wonderful to the community during the pandemic. You saved lives, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. See, he wouldn't have been able to say that.
Oh, my goodness. I tell you, she was the gavel. Can't take it. No, no, that was, that was good. I want you to address something, though I felt was good. In here, he just testified. Come on, no, Director. He just testified about, we went with $1 million. And this is, seems like that's a big opportunity, this is a big opportunity through HUD for us to do the wraparound. And we've got a lot of funds that we're doing. Not to say you can't get more funds for affordable housing, but we're doing a lot with affordable housing, already 40 million and all of that. And then we have some other funds that we usually have from our CDBG dollars for affordable housing. Why didn't we go above $1 million? Why a million? Was that all we could do? What was the rationale?
No, that, that, there's no cap on that particular item. So we knew from the feedback that we should not do all just affordable housing with this money, even though it was tempting to do it with all the words that have been out there lately about the need there. So we actually, I believe even the city, when they were doing their plans, they were looking at doing as much affordable housing as they could, these funds. But it was through the feedback with the community that we understood that that's not the only need here. And so we created that million-dollar carve-out without, you know, saying, "That's got to be the number." But that's significant. So it's this week of opportunity for folks to weigh in on those numbers and let us know what the final plan should look at like.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yes.
Yeah, I probably would want to look at, since for so long HUD did not allow the supportive services, and we're doing a lot with production, development, gap financing for affordable housing. Not to say that that's the total needed, but if this is our opportunity for those wraparound services, I want to make sure we're taking the fullest of opportunity. I don't know what that is. But just wanted to, the testimony made me think about that a little bit more. Vice President Treehouse?
Just want to ask about this.
Your microphone needs to be...
It is.
Oh.
Yeah. Yep. So, yeah, I just wanted to draw this distinction, though, again, and which is why I asked the question. So the housing that we're talking about, this affordable housing through this grant, has supportive services in the housing. Unlike the, some of the dollars that we put in CDF, which do not require that type of housing. So I just want to make this distinction, because I think it's important that the federal government has clearly defined a certain population that's to be targeted through these funds. And I just, I wanted to get clarity one more time on that, just to make sure I'm clear on what kind of housing we're referring to. So this is all housing with supports built in?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the 3.7 million includes wraparound services?
It will only be used to support projects, actual mortar, bricks and mortar projects that have those included.
Already have.
Well, that will have them, they have to be included in the package.
Gotcha.
When they apply, they have to say, "And we will have these services." So it won't be just housing units. There will be supportive services at that facility.
Okay, good. Thanks for that clarity. Okay. Commissioner Dumas, did you have anything to add?
Nothing.
Okay. Where do we go from here? Before I close it out, where do we go from here?
Yes, ma'am. So there'll be a resolution to approve the allocation plan at your, next Thursday's meeting, at the March 16th meeting. So this is in that window between now and then. That's the opportunity to, if there's any need to change anything, we can make that as we present it in a week.
Okay. And where can people find this plan?
Yes.
They were asking online.
Yeah. It is buried a little bit. It's in our community development section of the planning department. And then I believe it is a PDF sort of down the page. So I'll make sure that Matthew has access to that. And we can get that back out to folks one last time if anyone wants to weigh in.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to end the public hearing.
Second, Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will go back to, we have one public comment. William J., I don't think we got to have your last name. Do we have to have the last name? So William J.
There's a lot of identity theft going on in this whole country, you know. We're right now, people saying there's some... right now. People saying there's somebody they're not. And that's what I want to talk about. We're all given names. We're all given identities. And a lot of the problems with the government today is they want to take control and they want to, they think they know more than the people know themselves. And they want to take control of every situation, put everybody in a study, a classification. Nobody, none of you want to be put in a classification of, any, any classification. You wouldn't want to put anybody in. It's a problem a lot of people have. They want to be self-sufficient. And, yeah, you're talking about all the good things. I mean, you can, you can have all the access to all the funds you need to do something. But there's, we have a major problem with abuse, waste, and, yeah, fraud. There's no other word for it, starting with people that have been approved to leave the country with identifications, starting with the last administration of the Trump era, that were tied to hunting and fishing licenses, where people like myself that were, as a business owner that I sold, I'm also, I'm under the classification of, protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act. So it's, it's a difficult thing to deal with. And I think we can solve the problem, hopefully, where people that, the problem with they say of, what they classify people in these, these mental health groups is they, they don't believe anybody can get better. They think you're, you're going to be mentally ill the rest of your life. And it's because they don't let people stand up for themselves. We need, they need someone to speak for them, a lot of these people. And a lot of them are victims of attorneys that have conflict of interest. And there's still lots of attorneys that are dealing with these people that have, continue to have conflicts of interest in secret that need to be exposed. And they, they think you're doing, they're doing business for you. This isn't just one field we're talking about. It's many. Very famous people are calling for help of nonprofits that are abusing their nonprofit status, that need to lose their nonprofit status because they're stealing for the people that they say they represent. And they're, they're posing as it's going to another country where I guarantee is arriving. I have a proposal that I want to make, but I'll, I'll find the proper way to do that because people love to steal ideas in this country, too.
Thank, thank you for your comments. If you don't mind, Commissioners, I'd like to, before we give our comments, I'd like to advance, we have MSD who is here. And this past, I believe, weekend, there was a major incident involving MSD Mill Creek wastewater and wanted to give an update. I know some people called. I want to thank MSD for emailing through Holly updates for us. And I want to thank the Administrator for texting us. I know I was in church, so when I came out, I got the text that this happened. So I just wanted to allow them, Diana Christie, to come forward. I just asked her to join us today, her and her team, to give us an update on what's going on and make sure people understand about the safety of water. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Good afternoon, Madam President, Commissioners, and the Administration. I have here with me today Ryan Welsh and Jenny Richmond, our Deputy Directors. And I'm going to give an overview and, and then just kind of depending on what additional information you, you may want, both of them can weigh in. So as you just summarized, yes, we had a major power failure on Sunday. And I'm going to get into the background and what happened, but I do just want to say, we are operational as of last night. We did, we were able to get at least one of our pumps running. So that's the good news. And I'll explain what that means by the end. We're not entirely out of the woods yet. We're still responding in emergency, with emergency activities. The microphone's over. So let me just summarize quickly what happened. So again, this was 7:30 a.m. Sunday morning, March 5. And at MSD's Mill Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant in Lower Price Hill, we lost all electric, electrical power following a catastrophic failure of a high voltage transformer. Without power to the plant, wastewater in the sewers began overflowing into the Mill Creek and the Ohio River through-- falls. Very sensitive. Okay. Through constructed relief outfalls. So these are the, these overflows are referred to as combined sewer overflow. So these are points, points in our system where the flow can exit the system and where we also have overflows, as you know, during wet weather. And so MSD immediately, with, with people on site, immediately notified the Ohio EPA. That's through the Ohio EPA Spill Response Hotline, who also notified Ohio EPA's Division of Surface Water, who's regulatory portion of Ohio EPA that we work with routinely for our plants and our permit. We also contacted USCPA's National Response Center, ORSENCO, which is the Ohio River Valley Water Sanitation Commission, and local Emergency Planning Committee and other local response centers to ensure that all potentially affected people would be notified and alerted to the situation. As you mentioned, we also started our own round of calls, just making sure everyone knew of the situation because it really was severe and not something we had experienced before. The, what, as part of that notice and, and, you know, just ongoing, just wanted to continue to let people know that our local drinking water was not affected, is not affected because of the overflows at this site and that we're experiencing our downstream of the Ohio River intake for our local water. Any other communities that might be affected are the responsibility of those other bodies to notify them, but not aware of any nearby communities that have an Ohio River intake within the vicinity, vicinity of the impacted area. But as a safety precaution, one of the things we wanted to get out, especially with some of this nicer weather, really just letting people know to avoid recreation in the lower Mill Creek and the portion of the Ohio River, just immediately downstream of downtown Cincinnati. So the response plan, again, this was, you know, all put in action very quickly Sunday. Obviously needed to restore power as quickly as possible. We have small generators, and we were able to get other small generators at the site quickly on Sunday, but that was only sufficient to power the buildings and our IT servers. In order to power the equipment needed to run our facilities, we needed very large backup generators delivered on site. These are not like generators that anyone, you know, potentially uses for their home or a camper. These are semi-track mounted turbine generators that produce megawatts of power. So in order to get those, we had them from out of state shipped here. They come on semi-trucks, and we had seven generators for a total of 10 megawatts of power. That was through the day, Monday, they arrived on site, really overnight Monday, Tuesday morning. And then at that point, we had a team of high voltage electricians that were working to connect those generators to our substation to provide power to the plant. Took, you know, nearly another 24 hours, really, to make all those connections and then to ensure that it was safe to start returning power to the, to the facility. So then we began a process. MSD operations staff carefully placed processes online. Really had to be methodical about this. This is a complex system, and we had to make sure that compatible systems were operational before we could turn on the large pumps. So once we had our equipment and our processes and tanks sitting for a few days, that, you know, solids were settling and other things were putting pressure on the equipment and moving parts. So couldn't just flip a switch and turn things back on. We were doing it very slowly and carefully. It started with our blowers. It was one of the first things to get aeration. We restored primary thickening tanks. Then we worked to flush, flush our grit to prevent clogging, opening and aligning gates. During all this, we were performing SCADA checks. That's our, our system where we're able to monitor the entire network through our IT system. We had to get the bar screens running, the conveyor. And then finally, we were able to turn pumps on. And we had a pump running last night. And as of last, so that was Wednesday evening, we began pumping and we're taking about 65 to 70 million gallons per day is the, it's a quantity that we're able to treat right now. So that's coming into the plant. It is going through our, our primary treatment and disinfection. So that is very good news. And we've already seen significant decrease in our sewers. So in our sewer system, we have the interceptors that run up the Mill Creek and service downtown Cincinnati. And we've already seen those levels decrease. And then, of course, the, the CSOs that we're actively discharging have been drastically reduced as well. But as I said, with this, that is not full treatment, that is not full pumping capacity. So we have a few things that we're still doing, a few checks that we're still running to get additional pumps online, probably in the next day. Not sure if we'll have another one on today or not. But that's a significant improvement in the situation. I think the other, another thing that has been in our favor, you know, last week, we did have a significant rain event. And so we had a lot of flow. The Mill Creek was, was flowing well, so moving things quickly into the Ohio River. And then since then, the Ohio River level, which was high, has been dropping, which has allowed that flow to get out and move, move faster. So the Ohio River being high was making it a little bit more difficult for the flow to get out of the Mill Creek. So let me talk briefly about the, the impact, the environmental or any public health impact, and what else we did. So during the outage, we took all possible measures to minimize the impacts of the environment, and specifically the Mill Creek. There were no other environmental issues as a result of the transformer incident and the failure. There was no oils released to the environment or other hazardous chemicals. So what we're talking about is the impact of untreated wastewater getting into our creek and the streams and the river. So what we were able to do, and, you know, we can monitor our collection system. We could see how far the impact was. We could see where the overflows were occurring. And we did everything we could to offload, offload the flow from the sewers. We were able to utilize storage at one of our locations. It's SSO 700, so area where we've done a lot of work. So we're able to offload some of the flow with storage there. That is a facility where we can do treatment in wet weather. So we're able to do that. We also notified all of our customers that haul to the plant. So we notified the haulers. We notified our industrial customers that we typically service and service things like grease traps at restaurants. So we didn't do any of that routine work this week. We put that on hold to the extent we could. Some of those haulers, we worked with Butler County and Northern Kentucky SD1, were able to take anything that, you know, couldn't be held. And so they were, you know, fortunately helpful in that situation as well. And then we also worked with the Army Corps. So there is a lake in Wynton Woods where the flow, or the, the levels in that lake are monitored and managed by the Army Corps. And we worked with them to release some of that flow into the Mill Creek, which added some additional flow and flushing, I believe that was on Tuesday. So the other thing is our, our partners at the Mill Creek Alliance, they have been doing a lot of work. We work with them routinely on the water quality sampling and measuring in the Mill Creek. And so they've been out doing sampling, you know, and will really be kind of working to help us identify whether there are any long-term or residual impacts of this. It's really too soon to tell, but our expectations are that, you know, that now that we are pumping again, that this will be something that does not have a lasting impact on the water quality in the Mill Creek or the Ohio River. We do continue to recommend avoiding recreation on the lower Mill Creek and the Ohio River downstream of Cincinnati until further notice. We're trying to get that information out through our social media and partners that, you know, provide those notices generally when there are other conditions in the rivers. So I think I'll pause there. I don't want to take up too much time, but I know you might have specific questions. And again, Jenny and Ryan and all of our staff in MSD have been working diligently and very closely on some of these issues. So the two of them can help, depending on the kind of questions you have.
Thank you for the update. I know you have more as it continues to go, but we wanted to make sure the public knew. I have some questions now. I'm not an expert on treatment centers. But I was just looking at, we have Nick Crossley, who comes in all the time telling us as we, as we get prepared for something that might be disastrous, if you will. And he does a very good job of saying, we got to stay ready so we don't have to get ready. I was wanting to know about the, the big generator. Like you said, it's not like your home generator, you understand that. But do we have a, as he would call it, emergency management plan if that were to go out? Was that already a pre-plan? And also, are there other ones? I know there might not be as big as this one, but are there some other ones that, if they go out, because you said you had to order something and get something in, do we have a plan? Because that was one of my first questions, was wow, we got to order something. You know, it's hard to get things. Could you maybe just talk about that part? And if there's some other, other ones that might break down and give out?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ryan Welsh to talk about the status of the, so it was one transformer that failed. And we, this substation in particular typically has two transformers feeding our plant and why one of those was offline. So--
Gotcha. Thank you.
Ryan?
Get that. Okay.
Thank you, Ryan.
So, yeah. Normally, there are two transformers. If one fails, the other one is there to take its place. This is a, this high voltage substation, which is at Mill Creek Treatment Plant, has been there in operation continuously since 1959. We're currently, we have a capital project that the board approved to replace the transformers, replace the switchgear. That is underway. We've got new transformers. The, the one that, that failed was only installed February 3. Normally, you switch over to the, to the redundant transformer, so you have continuous power. But we're in the middle of a project. So what we have is the old transformer that was just disconnected just last week. And we're, to get us off of these generators, we're working to move that about 30 feet and then reconnect it to the high voltage lines. And it weighs about 120 pounds, or 120,000 pounds. So these things are massive. It's 138,000 volts coming into it, and then 13,200 volts coming out of it and feeding other smaller transformers within the treatment plant. So backup power is really not a feasible, not a feasible option for Mill Creek. And even these generators that we had to bring in from Philadelphia, under the emergency circumstances, are providing only 10 megawatts of power, which is about 15,000 horsepower, the diesel engines driving them. And we're using like 8,000 gallons of diesel fuel per day right now. That's not enough to run the treatment plant because the transformer itself is designed to handle 38 megawatts of power. So what we have today operates the treatment plant in a very limited manner. So we're really, we're being careful about what we run with the 10 megawatts of generation power that we have right now to stop the sewer overflows and treat as much water as possible and get, bring things back online. Hopefully, that answered the question.
Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, very technical, but I just want to make sure you, I understand. You said that we passed in the budget and, and there was something came in in February 3, and that broke down?
Yes. So we have a capital project right now. It's a design build project. We're installing new transformers and new switchgear for the Mill Creek plant. This project has been ongoing for about three years, I think. It's taken us two years to have these transformers, from the time we ordered them to the time we've received them. The other one is in California where they're manufactured. It was ready to ship, and we're asking the manufacturer to keep it there until we know why this failed. And we're going to hook up the old transformers that we know are from the 1950s. And they were being replaced for a reason, but that's what we're going to have to hook up until we get this resolved.
Gotcha. Yeah. So I definitely would be not happy with the manufacturer and the fact that the 1950s lasted until 2023, and the 2023 one broke down in a month. You remember, keep what you got over there. We don't want broke down--
Exactly.
--coming here. So that's something new that I learned. So that's what I was trying to, a lot of people were asked about that. What, how did this break down? So, okay.
So the good news, and you're, you're correct, President Reese, that the, it is the responsibility of the transformer manufacturer and also our contractor is a company called Patrick Engineering has a, the direct relationship with that supplier. So they're responsible for replacing the transformer and the cost of the, the backup power that we're, have it installed right now.
Yeah. And more than that. So hopefully, our lawyers are getting ready to prepare some for their lawyers because this is--
Yeah, I see Charlie's--
--big time. I'm sure of that. I'll open up, Vice President Drew.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I, you all look a little sleepy. I think there's a reason for that. I, too, got the notification on Sunday and was gratified that you were on it quickly and did everything that you could do to restore the power and get things moving down on the Mill Creek. I also am really glad that the Mill Creek Alliance was involved here. I, they're great partners in many, many things and have a real affinity for the Mill Creek and have done a lot of work down there to reclaim that, that waterway. And so I'm glad that they are on board, helping with the testing because they're a great resource. And I, I know you all know that, but I want to thank them as well. And I, I know you all know that, but I want to thank them as well for their work. So I, I too wanted to focus in a little bit on the equipment. So I, I had heard that the equipment that broke down was the new one, the old one was disconnected because we're doing work to replace that one. So, yeah, two things, kind of, it's kind of a where do we go from here kind of thing. If we've got one of these units that broke down and the other one's on order from the same place, I do have that same question, you know, what, maybe it doesn't make sense to continue along that path. I don't know, I leave that to the professionals to figure out. But it's extremely frustrating that, you know, we as a board have allocated money, and you guys have done the work to update in one of our major treatment facilities, and the, it breaks down in a month's time. I mean, that's just terrible. So it leads to my second question. I, I heard you talk about the limited capacity, given the energy that you've got going in, running the, the powered, you know, pumps right now. So is there untreated sewage still going into the Mill Creek in the Ohio? Or is it a matter of you treating what you can, and the rest of it is still within the system?
So we're treating most of it. There is some still going to the river. I, I think, I'm optimistic that by the end of the day, we'll have the second pump running, and that, that is our, that'll get us to 130 million gallons per day, which is our dry weather flow permit minimum. And then we're, we're working to bring back secondary treatment, which is a biological process. That's why we're running the air feed, to make sure the, the bacteria can breathe and stay alive. But it will, it will be a period of time to get the process running. Because while there was no air for the, for a three-day period, a lot of the bacteria that we need died off, and it gets, with no air, you have anaerobic bacteria growing. So it's, that's a biological thing. We're culturing all this bacteria, that's how the treatment process works. So it'll take some time to get back to where it's working tip-top again.
Okay, yeah, and I've actually been to the treatment plant, so I, I actually know what you're talking about. It's fascinating, but I don't love to talk about it. So we're gonna move on. I just have one other question. So when you talked about, and then, so my, my overriding concern is if there is a backed-up system, forgive the, you know, I don't like that analogy, but, but if there is sewage in the system that's not able to move through, because we don't have the capacity to treat it, and we don't want that to go directly into the Mill Creek. You talked about sewer backups, which is something that is terrifying to me, to hear, related to this conversation. So we're, we're not going to see, I hope, any kind of backup through the system, because we're unable to do the volume that we're used to, and it would then make its way back up through the system and get into people's houses.
As of right now, we have not received any calls saying that a home has been impacted by this. So everything that people discharge from their homes, or from industries, residential, commercial, whatever, it has gone into our interceptors and basically flowed, it flowed to the treatment plant, but it pretty much just stopped there. So it is backing up within our main interceptor, and the interceptor has these permitted locations that it can flow out of and into the creek, so that it's not going into people's homes. So that is, that is the way it was structured and designed, so that it, it has these relief points in the system, so that we're not backing up into the homes itself.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Diane, I just want to thank you for such a great summary of a difficult situation. So I was able to follow that, and I appreciate that. And also the fact that there was no great impact to our residents, as you said earlier, due to your quick response. So I want to thank all of you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director Christie. Thanks for coming up here today, just to let everyone know what's going on and give us a little better understanding. And I know you have more to do. You keep saying it's a biological thing, and you talk a lot about biology, but it is very complicated, and it was helpful for me today to understand about the, the generator and the transformer and those kind of things. So thank you. We'll let you get back to, to work, so we can hopefully have it resolved as quickly, efficiently as possible. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to comments, motions, et cetera, from the Commission. I'll start with Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just have a couple of things. I'm distracted by what we just heard. It's really, what a huge issue, and what a great response, really, from MSD. So I'm really grateful for their work. All right, so just a couple of things. We all participated in recognizing Dusty Rhodes is retiring. We did a proclamation for him, and he's been with us for, been with the county way before all of us, really, for 32 years. And so thank Dusty for his service to the county, and welcome Bridget Kelly, our new auditor, who I believe starts on Monday. Very excited that she's coming on board. And I understand that a lot of the staff is sticking around to make sure things run smoothly. So just wanted to recognize Dusty for his many, many years of service, and welcome Bridget Kelly. I also delivered a proclamation this morning on behalf of the Commission. It, it is Women's History Month, but it's also Social Workers Month. And so I was up at the University of Cincinnati in the School of Social Work, and they were very excited to be proclaiming the month for social workers as well as for women's history. And so they, they talked a little bit about the work that they do in many, many disciplines, whether it is with the homeless population, or people who are incarcerated, or people suffering from mental illness, or addiction, or just many, many things. And I got to meet a couple of the students, so it was really nice, and this Commission proclaimed the month. So I'm grateful that we were all able to sign off on that, and I could deliver that proclamation. And then lastly, Women's History Month. We had a, a nice event the other day on the courthouse steps. I, I read off a couple of fun facts related to the county. We have more women in executive offices here at the county, so county-wide office, than we ever have in our history, the majority, actually. We've got 50% of our judges are women, and then we have over 100 elected women throughout the county at all levels of government, whether it's with the village council, or the city council, or the mayors, or the township trustees. And many of them were able to come down from Delhi and Lincoln Heights, and we had people from Wyoming, coming from all over the county to participate in a photo opportunity to commemorate this time in our history, where we've got more women serving in elected office than ever. So I thank the two of you for participating in that and helping read the proclamation. So I thought it was a great celebration. We intend to do it every year, and want to thank the Commission on Women and Girls for having the idea for this recognition, and thank them again for their work, and thank Mary Mountie and Bridget Darty for helping put it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. Also attended, as was said earlier, Dusty Rhodes. He's been just a great moral support for me as I came through the ranks as, in different areas in politics. I also want to mention that I went to the USA Regional Chamber Annual Dinner since we last met, participated in the CSO Classical Roots Kickoff Breakfast, which was excellent. And then we had our legislative delegation meeting just Monday, and all the legislators came down, and it was very interesting, where we gave them our priorities and what we'd like for them to, to be fighting for in Columbus. So it was a great meeting. My Chief of Staff, Bishop Hilton, attended the zoo tour. The zoo levy, as you know, is coming up, and they wanted him and our office to see what areas are in disrepair and why they need a levy for this time. I also attended the Women's History Photo Shoot, and I thank Commissioner Dreehouse for pulling that together again this year. It was awesome. I attended the annual meeting of Reddy up at the monastery in Mount Adams. It's just absolutely historical building, and just had a great presentation up there by Reddy, and I enjoyed it. Attended the USPS Railroad Station Commemorative Stamp Dedication Ceremony this morning. And so we have commemorative stamps of Union Terminal, are ready to go if you want to purchase some of those. Madam President gave a very outstanding speech, if I had to grade it.
Thank you.
But I thought it was just excellent, yeah. But lastly, I want each office to be ready for a resolution, supplemental resolution that my office will be putting forward for the Small Events Grant, which the board agreed for $250,000 for, in the community, any events that are going on. But the maximum would be 25,000 per application, which would mean we could only help 10 communities. And I am asking for a supplemental adjustment to increase that to 500,000, so we can help more community events. I know for our large grant allocations, this small grant is not even half of what will be possibly given for the large grant opportunities. So I'm hoping by, no later than Tuesday, you will get an idea of what we're asking for to adjust our budgetary amount that we had already approved. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I also attended Dusty Rhodes' retirement, and was happy to be there with the proclamation as well, joining Vice President Dreehouse, and also welcoming Bridget Kelly, our new auditor, will be starting on Monday, and excited about that. And got a chance to see firsthand Dusty's, his photo with the Beatles. And that was my first introduction to Dusty Rhodes. He and my father were in music promotions, and he helped, helped promote with Dusty, getting people to buy the tickets to the Beatles. They weren't the Beatles like we know now. So it's just great to have been there today for him and his retirement, and all the work he's done for many, many years. Want to also commend Vice President Dreehouse and Mary Maui, and the Women and Girls Commission for putting together the photo of the women that are elected throughout this county. And I think each can be a role model to, a little girl now can watch and never have to say, I don't see anyone that looks like me. And girl dads can be out there telling their little girls that, hey, you can be anything that you want to be if you put your mind to it. And so I thought that was just phenomenal. I think we're one of the counties that have the most, if not the most. We have the most. See, we're number one in everything. That's, that's our goal, to be number one, the most women in elected positions, and they're in a variety of positions. So I thought that was just fantastic. So thank you very much for organizing that. And then today has been a little, little crazy. I've been moving really fast today. I spoke today and gave a presentation to the Cincinnati Regional Chamber for their Government Day, and all the work that we're doing here at the county, and our message and direction of One Hamilton County. So I was excited to be able to present today to them, and all of the wonderful work we're doing, and will continue to do, and the direction that we're headed. I also had a chance to speak today, and I was with Commissioner Dumas, got a chance to speak and unveil at the United States Post Office newest commemorative forever stamp collection, the railroad stations. And they've got a number of railroad stations, and I'm just gonna go out on a limb, ours looks the best. I love it. A beautiful structure that we have of Union Terminal is just phenomenal. And so I was happy to join the Honorable Daniel, I think it's Tanger Lini, who is the Governor of US Postal Services, as well as Elizabeth Pierce, who's the CEO of Union Terminal. And they were very thankful to the taxpayers of Hamilton County, who went and voted to restore Union Terminal. And they are celebrating 90 years. So they're celebrating 90 years. It was just a great thing. And what I love also the most was that there were so many young people, kids, who were in the building, and be able to connect the stamp with the history. And we're in a society where people need to see it, so they see this stamp, and then they start asking about it. And then, of course, once they start asking about it, we got them. Now we can give them the education about where they're, the building that they were in today. So that, I just was happy to see all those young people, children there today, as a part of it. Wanted to also say the 513 Relief Bus is, is moving. And it was in Colrain on Tuesday, and they're in Wanted Hills right now as we speak, providing health services as well as economic services. Also, on Friday, I got a chance to be very proud of my father, Dr. Stephen Reese Senior. He received the Addy, he was at the Addy Awards, and he received the Silver Medal, the highest medal, for someone who's in the advertising business. And he got the, the Lifetime Achievement Silver Award for the work that he and his company have done. And it was just great to be around a lot of creatives, all the people that create the marketing, the advertising. I remember I was there with someone, Judge Yates was there, and he says, who are these folks? I said, they're the people that encourage you on what to buy, because they determine all the advertising. So he has been in advertising business for 48 years, and has done some major campaigns for Procter &amp; Gamble, Ohio Tourism, CG&E, which is, I guess now Duke, and so many things. And I just started as a little kid in the ads, and I, I still never got the check. I don't know what's going on. But I was a little kid in the ads, and my mother started the business with him. And they've done a lot of things with the bank, Star Bank, that resulted in $7.8 million in people getting loans and those kind of things. So it was great to be there to celebrate him and Judy Thompson, who nominated him on the Cincinnati Ad Club. Want to also acknowledge her and thank her. Last but not least, tomorrow will be the last day here in the county for Quentin Monroe, my Chief of Staff. And I could go on and on, but one of the things that I wanted to say is that when I started in elected office almost 30 years ago now, and I've been in and out, and then back in, and then out, so it's not straight 30 years, but one of the things I always wanted to do, when I said that I was gonna stay in Cincinnati when I came back from college, a lot of my friends never came back to Cincinnati. They said, this is not a place where people that look like us can progress, even if we got the qualifications. It'll never matter. And many of my friends did not come back. Most of them did it, that left. I came back on a mission to prove a point, that this is my hometown. We can do it, we will do it, but we gotta do it with hard work. So ever since I was on city council, while I had a lot of issues I wanted to get done, one of my major issues was to start an unofficial training program for people who have the talent that look like me, who may leave and never come back here, but to say, there's a place for you here. So I started on that journey 30 years ago. I'm very proud that I've given a lot of young people, particularly African-American males, and also females, but males, who never would get a shot, couldn't get the job even if they got the resume, couldn't get the promotion even though they got the resume. And so Quentin Monroe is one of those folks that came out of Central State University, and I have been with him along his life in a lot of capacities. And then finally, an opportunity for him to be my Chief of Staff at 30 years of age. I think he was the youngest at the time. I know he's the youngest African-American male, and he carried himself with dignity. He had the skill sets, but just needed the opportunity. And now he will be using that opportunity to move on to Procter &amp; Gamble. And that's what I'm about. I've had those who've come with me, my, my days in over 30 years, they've gone on to be head people at Nike, Nike corporate, University of Cincinnati, and leading programs, housing opportunities made equal, being the Deputy Director. They've gone, one that's gone from my office to Silicon Valley as one of the chief legal councils. So that's what my journey is really about. Of course, we want to get issues passed and those kind of things, but I would say my legacy is what I started with, when my friends said they would not come back here. I wanted to prove, and I'm very proud of the young people that have come through my unofficial training program, where I've had a chance to give them the opportunity to be in physicians, make a living, and prove their, their sales, and get trained to be able to go to the next level. So after this, we'll have some more cake. I didn't know Dusty's was having cake, but we'd have some more cake, but please stop by and speak with Quentin and... I didn't know Dusty's was having cake, but we'd have some more cake. But please stop by and speak with Quentin. And I know that this is, we always in each other's lives, so you won't be going too far. I just won't have to pay you now to get some work out of you. But I want to thank him and I want to thank Veda Stevens, who has joined us and he's 22 years old. So that is one of my missions. I don't talk a lot about it, but I'm very proud of it. And it's a passion and a mission and a purpose in my life. And that's what I will continue to do. So I want to open up if anybody has something very nice to talk about, Quentin Monroe.
I got nothing nice. I'm just kidding.
Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. So yeah, Quentin, it has been a delight. It's, it's just been a real pleasure to work with you, to work on difficult issues, to, but partner with you to try to get to common understandings on many, many things. You have been professional, you have, you're smart. You've been very pleasant to work with. And I think we're gonna really miss you here at the county. I know you've, you're going on to great things at Procter &amp; Gamble. So I congratulate you on that. But really, thank you, thank you for your service to the county. We're gonna miss you here on the sixth floor.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You guys said a lot of what I had to say, but I have a few other things to say. We'll miss you, of course. Quentin, you are marvelous. You are responsible. You are professional. You're so intelligent, articulate, so pleasant, creative, intuitive, compassionate, authentic. You are a go-getter, great sense of humor, and the second-best Chief of Staff I know.
Wait a minute, I'd like to be number one. I also want to acknowledge, congratulations to Quentin and his wife, Maisha. They are expecting. So just, he's just got all these good things. Our careers went opposite. I started at Procter &amp; Gamble, he ended up here, he down, going to Procter &amp; Gamble. So thank you. And you all can say great things, take pictures after we get out of here. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ludo.
It's okay. Just, just very quickly, just Quentin, on behalf of the entire administration, all the department heads, just want to wish you the best of luck. You've been an absolute pleasure to work with. It's been our privilege to work with you over this time. I know you're gonna do fantastic things over at P&amp;G. So congratulations, best of luck. And please do not hesitate to reach out on anything.
In other words, Jeff will be reaching out to you on some other project. Well, Mr. Ludo, it is your, your time. So you have anything to offer us?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one by leave today. In front of you is by leave number one. This is a resolution authorizing the administrator to enter into an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the Free Store Food Bank. This is the emergency financial assistance to the Free Store Food Bank that was presented, that the Board had discussed several meetings back. This is in light of the ending of the emergency SNAP benefits by the federal government, which happened or which was initiated or is starting in, in March. This is $2 million. And the Free Store Food Bank, as the, as the Board is aware, was specifically selected for this specific assistance due to their unique relationship with food pantry, senior assistance, facilities, group homes, daycare facilities, those types of things. So they'll be able to use this funding and leverage this funding to get assistance out in Hamilton County to all these other organizations. I saw the Director of the Free Store Food Bank at an event recently and he had thanked me for this assistance and asked that I pass that thanks along to the Board of County Commissioners as he was very diligent in indicating the assistance that this will allow them to provide the residents of Hamilton County, given the discontinuation of those federal benefits. So with that, Commissioners, I offer it for your approval.
Thank you. And I do want to thank Kirk at the Free Store Food Bank. They are so workable and so responsive. If we, I remember we had one meeting and we talked about someone didn't have food. And before we could get out the meeting with the gavel hit, food already had been delivered. I mean, they do not mess around there and I want to thank them. And they've been out with the 513 relief bus. I mean, just, I tell you, that's the kind of people I really love working with. They try to figure it out and make it happen. So I want to thank them for that. I do have one question, just not for this particular maybe amount of money, but I did get a request from the Community Council President of Evingston. And he was concerned, they have a pantry, food pantry, and they've got people with needs, but he said the cost of food is going up. So just would like to ask, I think I said something to you, if you or Holly or someone can reach out because these are community food pantries and they take the pressure off of Free Store Food Bank because they're able to, you know, handle Evingston or certain areas. So just wanted to make sure that that was out there as well.
Yeah, we will absolutely follow up with them. We'll also follow up with the Free Store as well, given their partnership with local food pantries, community centers, that type of thing, just to make sure that we're, we're getting that assistance from this level to those individual entities.
Okay, awesome. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to repeat what you had said about the pantry in Evingston, that if we can look at other pantries that are also in need, that would be great.
That'd be awesome. And maybe find out who the Free Store partners with and who they don't partner with more specifically.
Great.
Yeah, glad we're doing this today. This is important.
Awesome. Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt by leave number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Thank you. Anything else? I'm sorry. Commissioner Dumas?
I just wanted to say something before Jeff got started, if it was okay.
Yes, go ahead, Kirk.
Just on a personal note, and as you were talking about Union Terminal, and just a testament really of how far we've come, I could not forget about, my mom worked at Union Terminal in the 50s. She worked in the food area and they would bring, the black workers would bring the food up for everybody at the top floors. But the black workers were not allowed to eat on the top level. They all had to eat in the basement. So I thought it was just a testament because now you have her daughter that was sitting on the front row as they were dedicating the Union Terminal staff. So it just meant a lot to me.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you so much for sharing that. Mr. Ludo, anything else? Okay, so we'll move to the calendar. We got our engineer. Where's Mr. Beck at? He's got out of here on us.
He did not. He, he has the day off every once in a while.
What? That's not allowed. I gotta put a motion. Where's the gavel?
He didn't.
No, we're glad to have you, yes.
Thank you.
You have item one and two, right?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you, Todd Long, Chief Deputy Engineer. Item one is a joint agreement with Claremont County, the City of Loveland and Hamilton County for the maintenance improvements of the Loveland Road Bridge. It's Project 502015. Total estimated construction costs are $905,000. We have a cost share on this particular project through OPWC grant that was applied for by the City of Loveland for $277,598. Hamilton County Engineers Funds out of the Permissive Auto will be $335,335. Loveland City will be contributing $67,067. And Claremont County will also be participating at $225,000 even. So this is a nice opportunity to have a collaborative effort between three different entities to solve a problem that we have on a bridge that needs some repair for joints, the approaches, some railing works, some sidewalk works, some small superstructure work. So that's a good example of partnerships.
That's one. What's two?
Item number two is a joint agreement with Colrain Township for the construction of improvements to East Miami River Road. It's approximately halfway between Deh and Dunlap, moving north through about 700 feet toward the end of Dunlap. It's primarily largely for roadway stabilization project, where there's some small landslides that we have to correct before we can make major improvements to the road servicing project. So that's a total, total package of $2.9 million. This is, also has some cost share with the OPWC grant from Colrain Township and a 50-50 cost share between the OPWC grant and the remaining funds from the County Engineers' Office through Permissive Auto Fund. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Vice President Dreehouse.
Yeah, I have a question. So the East Miami River Road project in particular, and I know I've asked this question before, but, and I, and I just, just did text Eric back too about this, just to make sure he, it's on his radar. So when we do.
He's on the day off?
I know, right? Oh, I didn't know. I didn't know he wasn't gonna be here, but come to find out, he's not. So, but you know, when we do these kinds of projects, I would hope and I would, you know, as, as policymakers, as one of the three, I, I want to think about bike trails or bike lanes when we're doing this kind of work. Because this one, it especially hit me because I'm familiar with East Miami River Road and it is in a very scenic part of Colrain Township. And I heard from a constituent about how, wouldn't it be great if we could start bike lanes as we do these kinds of road projects? And, you know, connect, connect, connect as we go, not suggesting that we build all of it at once, but this is a good example of a chunk of road that could start the progress when it comes to just a little bit of space in the right-of-way to accommodate bike lanes. And so I just, I've mentioned this to the engineer in the past. These are permissive auto fee dollars that this board passed a number of years ago. And so as we continue to do this work, I'm hoping that we are looking for opportunities when we can to expand that road just a little bit, make it just a little bit wider so that in 10, 20 years, people aren't scratching their heads saying, man, I wish they had put a bike lane in when they had the opportunity to do that, right? And this seems like a really great opportunity to do that. So I don't know what the cost increase would be on a project like this one. It's a pretty expensive project to begin with. But I would sure like that kind of breakdown. And just know that, that we've got an eye towards that as we are repairing roads throughout the county.
That's a, that's a great point, Commissioner. One of the things that I think the challenge with road widening infrastructure is that the potential for the right-of-way width, the acquisition. I'm not gonna pretend I know directly off the top of my head whether we have significant right-of-way width on East Miami River Road as it largely follows the river and meanders. I suspect that we probably have a somewhat narrow right-of-way width in that particular location. That would be one of the things that we would have to look at in order to be able to advance something like that. And we would, we would definitely need some partnerships with the commission to be able to responsibly spend the road and bridge funds, which we are in charge of, of course, with your, with the Commissioners' help, to look at that. So I think there's opportunities for partnerships across the board. This particular stretch is approximately a half a mile. And I know we've done some resurfacing on East Miami River Road in the past several years. So it would be a good opportunity as we start to construct these. So it's absolutely something we will be looking at. Appreciate the comments.
And I, I don't know what the cost, cost differential is. And obviously, all three of us need to know that information. But when we first passed that auto tax, that was maybe in 17?
I think it was 2019, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it was, when I was, I wasn't here that long when that happened. And you know, and that was a challenge, I'll be honest. I mean, you know, to, to have to do that. But at that, at that time, we mentioned this and said, you know, when there's an opportunity, you know, maybe we can look at the bike lanes. So anyway, I just wanted to raise it again and, and remind that, that if there's an opportunity, we pursue that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not have any comments until the bike lane issue came up because I know in our recent budget, we gave lots of money for bike lanes. And I'm just, I guess what I'm doing is asking Jeff if maybe on our website, we can indicate how much money we've given for bike lanes for those that are really interested in making that accessible and make that happen. I think it was like 500,000.
So that was for bike paths? These lanes are adjacent to the road. The, the money that was flowing to the TID was more for those bike paths along the Mill Creek and up through the county. And so they're off-road. So this one's a little different. These are on-road.
How much did we get for that, Jeff? Do you remember?
It's 500.
I, I think it was, we had, we had 350,000 initially. I think we may have put another 500,000 in, in the budget. So as Mr. Long indicated, if we're looking at, at something along the road, we'll have to just talk about eligible use of funds, the road and bridge fund with the permissive auto tax and what that delta might be and how we might creatively go about partnering to help install those.
And I just want to clarify, I'm speaking for myself. I'm only speaking for myself, not everybody else.
Go ahead, what'd you say?
Well, I said, I'm speaking for myself. When we talked, we've talked about this for about four years. And so I just want a breakdown of, you know, what, what the cost would be, what additional cost if there is a possibility. I, I speak for myself. I didn't mean to speak for the whole commission. But this is something that, that we've discussed before.
Okay. Commissioner Dumas.
Yes, I, I appreciate the clarity, Commissioner Dreehouse. But just in general, so the public can see what we're committing to bikes and bike paths or bike trails. I think that would be good for people that are, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Now I'd like to make a motion. Are we good? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to pass items number one and two.
Second. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, now we get into Commission Administration. We've got a number of grants that are coming forward. And I'd like to ask Holly to walk us through items number three through 11.
Thank you. Thank you, President, President Reese. So items three through nine are grant agreements through the county's American Rescue Plan funding. Items three and four are the remaining two American Rescue Plan agreements with nonprofits to provide teen suicide prevention services. And if I could pause for just one second. Sarah, I think there may be people out there that are for a particular topic. So if you don't mind, thank you. The first is an agreement with One in Five in the amount of $188,000. Through these grant funds, One in Five will increase the number of schools that they, they serve through their ability to be resilient in youth prevention programs. And they, they project to have an 18% increase in the number of schools that they service through these programs. Again, that's in the amount of 188,000. The item number four, again, is a teen suicide prevention grant with Best Point in the amount of $112,075. Best Point will use these funds to expand their current services to include a pediatric mental health urgent care clinic, which would be used as an alternative to and to reduce the demand on local emergency departments. It's anticipated this program will treat approximately 300 patients within a year. We have been, it's our understanding that a pediatric urgent care will help fill a gap in the continuum of crisis services for youth and families within Hamilton County. So for those two, because those are both our final two agreements for our ARPA youth suicide prevention grants, we do, I believe, have a representative here from One in Five, I believe, is, is here? And we also have a representative from Best Point if there are any specific questions for either of those two programs.
I don't have a question, but I know they've been here a while. Would you like to say a word? At least for your parking, for your parking fee? Can you say a word?
My name is Jess Hartley. I'm from One in Five. And we're really grateful for this opportunity, for this funding. And it's going to go a long way for us to continue to expand the work we're doing in, in schools to prevent suicide among teenagers. And just start the conversation around mental health and wellness. We all know, we all have a brain and we've all got to take care of them. And that's really the message that we're trying to communicate to students across the greater Cincinnati area just so that they can understand how to better take care of them themselves and their mental health and hopefully in the end, end suicide for our community. So that's our goal. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for One in Five?
Thank you.
No questions. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Gingrich. I'm with Best Point. Best Point is the result of a merger between the Children's Home and St. Alwiches Orphanage. They merged last February. And we're excited to receive the funding for the teen suicide prevention to support our pediatric mental health urgent care and also integrate technology to help us better screen and identify youth to detect suicidal ideation. So we, twofold.[1727.42] So twofold, the pediatric mental health urgent care is really intended to cover the gap between those kids who have an emergent situation but don't need to go to the emergency department. We know Cincinnati Children's has one of the largest inpatient units in the country and is overflowing, the department is overflowing with children with psychiatric conditions. So we want to offer families, children and families, an alternative that they can come and actually get treatment, not just triaged, and get connected to aftercare. So really trying to have a better experience for kids and families and prevent unnecessary emergency department and hospitalization. And then also integrating the Clarity app, which will help us screen and detect suicidal ideation. We know that providers are not always successful in detecting when kids are presenting with suicidal risks, so using the latest science and technology will help us better identify those kids that we need to pay extra attention to, extra screening, parent notification, those kinds of things. So I'd like to thank you all for this.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. So these is item three and four. I'd like to make a motion to approve items three and four.
Second, Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so items five through nine on the agenda are grant agreements for our workforce development training program through the American Rescue Plan. So just as a refresher, the board authorized up to 5.7 million in our American Rescue Plan Act for organizations to expand existing workforce development training programs focused on in-demand careers of construction, IT, transportation, healthcare, and hospitality. We have these several in front of you today. There will be several more coming forth in future meetings. So I'll just go through these one by one, because I do believe we also have representatives from each of these organizations here today. So item five is an agreement with Easter Seals Tri-State in the amount of $225,000. They will expand their youth construction pathway program to serve up to 225 youth, with all graduates receiving up to 12 months of follow-up services. So I think Debbie Smith is here, Vice President of Easter Seals, if there are questions for her.
Welcome.
We are actually now Easter Seals Redwood, as we combined with Redwood. That's okay? When we applied, we probably weren't official. But we're very happy to continue to offer our construction training for youth throughout Hamilton County. They will get certification in N C E R, which is core carpentry, bobcat, forklift, and OSHA-10. If you have any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes.
What's the placement rate? Do these programs already exist, or is this a new program?
Yes, this is a program that already exists. So we currently have a contract with Department of Labor that we've held since about 2009 for youth build. We've been very successful with our youth build program and our youth apprenticeship readiness grant, which is also for youth in construction, again, focusing on, we focus 17 to 24. And our placement rate is 75%. Our retention rate is running right around 62% right now at a year, which is still pretty good, even though things have been a challenge through the pandemic. We're able to modify our training so that it's not all in-person, that we can do some things virtually in combination. But we've got to have people on site, because you can't make houses virtually.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And then Holly, what makes this different than Urban League program that we just heard last week? Is the same, give us more people?
They're similar. I think Urban League is focused on more adults than maybe youth, from what I recall was being presented last time by Urban League.
Gotcha.
We do work in partnership with each other in providing some of the training, because there's such a high need in some of the industries and specifications that we're looking at. I know they've got their HVAC as well, which is a part of construction.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Item six is an agreement with Cincy Smiles in the amount of $184,500, who will, Cincy Smiles will expand their existing dental assistance workforce training program to include training for medical billing, patient advocate, and dental lab techniques. So their goal is to provide services for up to 200 low-income residents. And of course, like many of these programs, participants will always also receive links to supportive services and case management. I think the CEO, Sonia, is here? Maybe not. Okay, she wasn't able to make it.
Wow, I was looking forward to Cincy Smile.
Yeah, sorry. She was here?
She had to go.
Yeah, she was here.
Thank you.
I'll move on to item seven, which is an agreement with ICRON in the amount of 205,000. They're going to add capacity to their existing services to get through their backlog of people that are on the waiting list for workforce training programs. They are going to work closely with employers to match candidates with jobs, and they do offer certifications in building maintenance, as well as restaurant and kitchen settings. Again, it's for 205,000, and Randy Strunk, I think, is here, the director of ICRON, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate the support for this program, and we do have a lot of individuals that are on the waiting list for us. It takes a lot of courage to ask for help, and then to be told you're going to have to wait a little while discourages people from following through at times. So we're happy to get these resources to be able to expand the program and place people in more livable wage jobs.
Awesome. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next one is item eight, an agreement with Cincinnati Health Network in the amount of 225,000. This program, they'll be able to expand their existing training program to allow additional individuals to participate, which is focused on medical and dental assistance training. And with this expansion, they'll be able to do more focused classroom training for a shorter period of time, followed by hands-on training within the Cincinnati Health Network clinics. And I believe Brian Vanderhorst, the CEO, is here. If there are, again, any specific questions.
Hello. Hi. I want to thank everyone. This is so great for us to be here and get this opportunity. Cincinnati Health Network is a community health center. We provide health care for the homeless. So our focus is greater Cincinnati, Hamilton County, and the counties surrounding us. With COVID, we recognize that staffing was such a challenge for us and many others, and it was part of our strategic plan to create workforce development, and this opportunity came along and we seized upon it, and we're fortunate. But, so our goal is we'll be able to train medical assistants and dental assistants in our offices. We'll have a specific training program. We hope to do it in a shorter period of time, and then they'll be able to do in-house training within our clinic locations. And we're targeting individuals that are either homeless now, are underemployed, unemployed, living in low census tract areas. So that's, there'll be no charge for this as opposed to going to Gateway or Cincinnati State. We're pretty excited. This will be a great opportunity.
Well, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
And the last grant agreement for your consideration is item nine, which is an agreement with the Community Action Agency in the amount of 225,000. I will say, this was, I believe, the only application we received for CDL training, which I think we all have heard about the need for CDL licensed drivers. So this program will expand CAA's commercial drivers license training program. It's a five-to-six-week program that's in partnership with Napier Trucking, which is an established CDL program in Hamilton County. They expect to serve 41 participants by paying their tuition. 80% they anticipate will receive their CDL certification, and all participants will receive job readiness, job placement, and of course, like I've mentioned, with all of these grantees, supportive services and wraparound services. In addition, CAA has some money in the budget to actually pay for people's transportation to get to the training as well, to overcome that barrier. So with that, I believe Eric Thomas, Vice President of CAA, is here if there's any questions or comments for him.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to expand our program. CDL has been our top-performing program at CAA for some years now, and since COVID, the interest and the demand for CDL training has increased easily for us by about 25%. So the additional funding to just expand and have more capacity to serve has been a great opportunity.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No questions as it relates to CAA, but since it's our last grant, I just had a comment I'd like to make. Okay, can I say something? CAA? I want to just say, the Community Action Agency, I mean, I don't know, Mr. Thomas, when it started under Gwen Robinson, the CEO, I remember she said, we need to start this program. And I was at the state, I was president of Black Caucus, and Community Action Agency started this program. We were able to get funding from ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, which is not easy to do. And we started the first pilot at Community Action Agency in Cincinnati, and then it moved around the state. They also, other community action agencies, because of the work we did here. But at that time, there was a 90% placement. They had, I remember a single mother who was going back, learning, and then went on and made, you know, big-time salary, was able to get a job where they don't have to be driving out of town. I'm just saying, if that track record has continued, I'm excited to be supporting this because it's something that has been over the years. We were trailblazer here in Hamilton County with this program, and it's very expensive to get the CDL license. At the same time, there's a lot of jobs available. So people being able to go and don't have to put up all this money to get the training is a huge thing, or a huge gap that we've got as it relates to CDL, all the way to the point where the 513 relief buses, it cannot be built where you have to have a CDL. Each of us could drive the bus if we needed to, but I don't know about our driving skills. But the point is, this is needed, and happy to support all of these programs, but I wanted to highlight this, this particular one. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have before us, that's the last one, right?
Grants, I have one more.
What's your other item?
It's an amendment to the American Rescue Plan, item number 10.
Can we do it, item number 10, and then open it up if you have time? Okay, go ahead.
So item number 10 is an amendment to our American Rescue Plan funding plan, excuse me, to allocate additional money to our youth resiliency grant program. The board allocated 1.5 million for youth resiliency grant programs to provide funding to organizations that help youth overcome social isolation that we all know was so exacerbated by the pandemic. Grant funds are intended to leverage existing programs such as outdoor activities, extracurriculars, after-school, summer programs, mentorship, those types of programs. Well, I think we completely underestimated what the demand would be for this type of a grant. We, again, we allocated 1.5. We received roughly 4.8 million in requests for grant funding, and upon evaluation, we, the administration is comfortable recommending grants up to 3.9 million. But because those, that amount exceeds the 1.5 the board allocated for this, we would need a resolution amending the ARPA plan to move more money into the youth resiliency grant to bring forward grant agreements for board consideration. We do recommend moving money from the workforce development grant line item. The board allocated 5.7 for that, but we did not come near that in terms of applications. So we recommend moving 2.4 from workforce development into the youth resiliency grant. And if approved, we will start then bringing forward agreements for those youth resiliency grants.
Thank you for that. I would not have a problem with that, but what I want to say about the youth in all these grants, let me just go back. I want to say on all these grants, we give the dollars to these organizations, very good organizations. What I don't want, and this is my marketing hat, is that there needs to be some clarity on there that these dollars are made available by the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. You can't just say Hamilton County, because a lot of folks run it with the Hamilton County brand, it doesn't fall under the Hamilton County Board. And because we don't want anyone coming to us saying, you have done nothing for the youth. What are y'all going to do for the youth? And where I'm at with all organizations is that when we put these dollars, we must have ROI, not just, you know, the PowerPoint. We got to see it. We got to touch it. I want people knowing that this board is taking bold steps, because we had to make, all three of us had to make a decision, and we have made a decision to put money in teen suicide prevention. I want to know about some prevention. We put money in other things like youth. I mean, I want to have a whole thing about you. Everybody says, I'm doing this for the youth. And then I walk outside, they, nothing to do, nowhere to go, parents getting mad, saying we're not doing anything. So I want, one, that it is known that we are a part of it. And then, second, I want these organizations, this doesn't fall on you, Holly, I'm saying this to the organizations, no more get the money and you run off. You are going to have to show us that you actually help youth. And I'm not saying, you know, because when you say youth, here come everybody. I got a program, and I'm doing this, I'm doing that, I'm helping two youths. We need to really see it so that we're making some kind of impact. It's just like affordable housing, we've got 40,000 units, or, you know, missing, we want to see. Now we have 40,000, now we're only down to 20,000. We want to have those type of results. And I just wanted to say that to all the people, because there had been a trend maybe in the past. They get the money, they come up here, and then they gone. We don't see them no more, and then we get hit with, you haven't done anything. So I just want to make sure that the marketing and advertising is clear, and that the ROI is clear, because we want to know too, you know, what we're doing, did it make a difference? So just wanted to share that, that's not on you. I'm saying that to the people that's, once they sign the contract.
And when they sign the contract, if I may, they do have quarterly reporting to report on the outcomes of the funds, and we do have information in there on giving the board credit.
Got you.
And we'll make sure to underscore that as they are giving the final contract.
Well, not credit, it's just like what everybody else, we're a sponsor. We're a sponsor. We're not looking for credit. We're a sponsor of this, and we, we're trusting them, instead of us doing it directly, we're trusting them to be an arm of us to help get the help that the people need. So that's what we want to make of some people. They're real good with these reports. Oh, man, they send a typin' and everything, and just a typin'. And then you go out here, and somebody says, I ain't never heard of them. So we want to make sure of that. So thank you so much, Holly, for staying on top of them. Commissioner Drehouse, and then Commissioner Dumas, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a couple of questions. So, and I just a reminder that these are one-time funds, because they're the American Rescue Plan funds from the federal government. So we've got a lot of ongoing streams, but this is one-time money, and I'm glad we've got the opportunity to disperse it in this way. So I'm happy to support the money going from one bucket, the workforce, over to the youth resiliency. My one question, though, related to that is that we had the Building Futures presentation the other day, and I want to make sure that there is money still available to fund some other projects that have brought, been brought to our attention.
That movement, we still will have roughly 1.2 available in the workforce grant budget for other uses, once the board, and that does include, we have factored in the Urban League, because we are under contract, we're going through the contracting phase with them right now. So they're counting forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments, and you brought up a good point about how programs are going on, and you really don't know that it's Hamilton County. I was reading last night, I'll see if I can find it, but it says, Job and Family Services, this event that they're, they're not having it, but Job and Family Service will be there. And if you're interested in going to a ballet, or a football game, or a concert, now to me, in my head, that's beyond your imagination, the program that we have going on through JFS, and that needs to be advertised that way. So you brought up a great point. I just wanted to say, in general, items three through 10, these are such great programs. I've worked personally with a lot of them, some of them as a social worker, but I just wanted to say, they're such great programs, and we're changing lives with these programs. And I am so touched, humbled, honored to be able today to say yes, to provide these services for these people. So I just needed to say that, Madam Chair.
Yeah, no, this is, this is one of the things the administration for moving the vision of the board to reality. And a lot of people say, oh, it's a one-time thing. People sometimes, they got a no time. They were getting no time, and at least one time, maybe we could save somebody, somebody's life might get saved from this. We're hoping to prevent suicide, without worry about what's going to happen 24. We're talking about people right now. And the things that we're doing can impact people's lives so big right now. They're just, people out there suffering, they need a right-now program and a right-now help. And I'm just so proud of my colleagues in this board, the way we've just stepped up, and this administration made it come to life. So I would like to make a motion, I think it's historical, I done got a motion O, or emotion, but I'd like to make a motion, items three through 10, to be approved.
Second, Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Holly, for your work. Mr. Ludo, item number 11?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number 11 on your regular agenda is a resolution authorizing the administration to enter into a new cooperative agreement, or amended and restated agreement with the Port of Greater Cincinnati and the Convention Facilities Authority. Just a little bit of explanation on this, we are approaching the date to refinance or pay off the notes related to the hotel acquisition and demolition that was issued through the port authority, total principal of around 53.5 million. We're obviously recommending at this point that we refinance that debt, as opposed to paying off all of that at one time. These would be two-year notes through May of 2025. What the resolution does is really just extends the existing cooperative agreement that we have between the port and the CFA for another two years to allow for the CFA funding to allow for the, the CFA funding to be used to pay for those, those debt service, to make those debt service payments. So again, the alternative being to pay off the debt right now, which would obviously be financially challenging, given the total principal of, of over 50 million. So the administration recommends approval of this. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Can you identify why do we need to refinance? How long did you finance originally for the, for this millennial? I wasn't here, so.
Yeah.
How, what was the, the thought in terms of paying this off?
So I think the initial thought was, at the time, we were looking at a hotel and convention district project that would move forward back in, this was in the 2019, 2020 era, looking at a hotel or a convention district project that would move forward. The thought was to issue, while that planning was going on, to issue notes to, for three years. I believe we issued them for three years in 2020, which would become due in 2023, with the expectation that at that, at that time, we would refinance them into the broader package of whatever that broader hotel and/or convention district project would have been. Obviously, at that point, COVID happened, and so everything shut down, and that, all the plans got pushed out at that point. So we are now back into the business of, of planning in the convention district again. So the thought is to push it, is to do these for an additional two years with a, I believe, a six-month call on these, so that if during that time there's a broader financing to occur, as we heard about on Tuesday, perhaps refinancing a lot of things through the convention district that we would be capable of doing it at that time. But that's why we had done it for three years, or, back in 2020, was to give ourselves the ability to do, to put that into a broader refinancing and a broader convention package sometime between then and now. Unfortunately, COVID got in the way of that.
And so what we're passing today will be another temporary thing because you're saying it would have to be refinanced again.
Yeah, ultimately, it will be put into the broader common financing package where we will put that in with all of the refundings that we do for the Duke Energy Center and all those other debt streams as well.
Gotcha. And what is the note?
What is?
How much do you pay? Are we passing, are we paying something monthly?
So there is a semi-annual interest payment on this. I believe that is, John, you have the exact number, 1.2, 2.7 million annually, I believe? I'm sorry? Is it semi-annual, so 2.7 annually? We hope to make as few of those payments as possible before we wrap that into a broader refinancing.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up, because someone said, "What is bonding?" It's like going to get a loan, and we've got an interest rate on it, and we've got to pay a note. And these notes are paid to whom? From the Port Authority? It has their name on it?
So the Port Authority is, is the, the one that is actually doing the, or is actually getting the loan, if you will. So there, so if you think about it in those terms, Commissioner, someone who's taken out a mortgage on their house, the port is actually the one doing that on our behalf. And this agreement between the county, the CFA, and the port essentially says, "If you do this, we will use these funds to pay the debt service or the mortgage payment that you are, that you have undertaken for our behalf, on our behalf."
And then it says, in here, the whereas, maybe it's explanatory, but I just want to make sure I understand it. Says, "Whereas the county desires to enter into the 2023 cooperative agreement with the CFA and the port." Is that, when you say cooperative agreement, is that the refinancing of the?
So the, again, so the port will be the actual entity that is doing the refinancing. The cooperative agreement is the agreement that exists between the county and the CFA, and then the port, to say that the money that comes into the CFA will be used to support those debt service payments. So it gives the Port Authority the ability to say, "Okay, we're gonna go out and, and sell these notes and take on that financing burden on behalf of the county and the CFA." This is the agreement that they won't be left hanging, and that the money will go to pay those debt service payments.
Gotcha. And this cooperative is only between the county, the CFA, the port? The reason I'm asking that is, we were asking at, about the, it needs to come out of residual funds. We were asking about, when we were talking about the different financing options, we were talking about the, you know, putting, a lot of money being put into this fund during, say, a music festival that has 90% African Americans that attend. And then when it goes in this fund, nothing goes back to the black community. So we were talking about the Black Music Walk of Fame, and I appreciate you were talking about that. But you were saying you would have to get the city, the county, and the CFA. Where on here, this deal says it's the county, the CFA, and the port. So I'm confused about that.
Yeah, there is, there is a broader cooperative agreement that includes the city, the county, and the CFA. This particular cooperative agreement is only between the county, the city, county, the CFA, and the port because it involves the county's stream of occupancy tax revenues.
Right. And what I was referring to is the county's stream of occupancy tax. Is that a possibility? Because you made, you made me think if we went with the cooperative, we had to have the city on board. I'm just confused. I'm just trying to understand the process.
This particular agreement is just the county's stream?
Right.
When we take this out next year, it'll be a broader cooperative agreement that includes the city.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Right now, this is just the county pledge. The broader one will include a city pledge.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any questions, Vice Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
No questions? All right. All right. I make a motion to approve item number 11.
Second, Commissioner Dre, I'm sorry, Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes. All right. We're going to the consent agenda, that's items 12 through 22. So, Mr. Ludo, you want to walk us through?
I will. Madam President, so item number 12 is a budget adjustment. This includes additional right-of-way costs for the Phil's Road improvements as well as the transfer of funding within a grant account. There's $3 million that we're transferring within our ERAP 2, with our ERAP 2 fund, to fund personnel costs associated with the administration of that, of that, of that program. Item number 13 is a resolution for the award of a bid, ITB 081-22, to Debra Kempe, doing business at EMCOR, related to the controls, the HVAC controls at the Hamilton County Courthouse. Item number 14 is the purchase of one Ford F-250 for the county auditor's office. Item number 15 is actually the rejection of a bid, of bid 024-23. This relates to elevators in this building, the Todd Portune Center. I do want to clarify one thing. This relates to the two elevators, one through four. The, the other elevators, the high-rise elevators, one through 10, as well, as well as the freight elevators, has already been awarded. So just so the, the board is aware that this bid rejection, which was because the, the bids came in over by more than, by greater than 10%, only relates to those one through four elevators. There's also, item number 16 is a resolution appointing a new member to the Hamilton County Economic Inclusion Advisory Committee. This is Robert Moore, on behalf of the Women's Business Enterprise Council, Ohio River Valley Chapter. Job and Family Services, item number 17, $500,000 for residential group home services with Mayo Home for Youth Development. And finally, items eight through, 18 through 22 are those official bond and oath of office items that came before the board last week. We did clarify that in this respect, the board is only accepting these for the record, not approving, not actually approving the, the members on this, but just accepting for the record. So with that, Commissioner, happy to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you. I just have one comment on item number 15, these elevators. I've heard that the bids came in too high. I was on the elevator today. I know you said, up to the fourth floor. I need to know what's going on from the fifth to the sixth and on up because.
I'm sorry, let me, let me clarify.
That one already fixed.
Yes, let me clarify. So, so you've got two banks of elevators when you, in the, in the lobby. For those watching at home who aren't familiar, there's one bank of elevators that only goes floors one through four. There's another bank of elevators that goes one through 10. These bids, the rejection, only relates to those elevators that go one through four. The ones that go one through 10, we've actually already awarded. So those, that is underway.
When will they get on the way? Because we got stuck today. I went from Dusty Rose's Retirement.
That, that particular project will, I believe, starts this summer. So.
Oh, boy.
This year, we'll be working on that.
Oh, boy.
A lot of steps?
Lot of steps, especially when you had a surgery on your knee. Okay, I would, I don't know how we can advance it. How do you do it on the calendar? We like to advance the work on item number 15. Okay, open it up. Any, any comments, questions?
Well, I was gonna speak to what you were saying about the elevator. Maybe, I don't know if we need to let people know what seems to be the problem. You got caught. Today, we were going to Dusty Rose's. We pressed three. It bypassed three completely and went to four. And so it's like, I don't know exactly what, how can it bypass a whole floor when you press three? Oh, it went to two. It bypassed three and went to two.
Yeah, I know, we, we've had consistent complaints on the elevators. We've had our, our contractor in routinely to be on site. And I think at the end of the day, the, the answer here is to replace the elevator.
Or either have something to snack on when you get in.
Put a vending machine there.
Okay. Just, Madam President, I have one other. Item 17, Mayo Home for Youth Development, is a provider. I'd like to know where they are located, because we always want to try to keep our babies close to home if we can.
I believe, Commissioner, they are on Wolfher Avenue in Cincinnati, but I will defer to our colleagues at JFS, if there's anyone online who can confirm that. I know they at least have an office there. I'm not sure if that's their headquarters or not, though.
Okay, if I don't, if she's not online, I can find it.
This is Laura. I'm online. And yes, they're actually a local provider and only provide services in our community. And it's a minority-owned business as well, so I'd share that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I make a motion to adopt items 12 through 17, and to accept for the record items 18 through 22.
Second, Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes. Any other items?
I have one thing I'd like to say.
Yes.
Just in general, whoever's watching, to make sure you get on our website, hamilton-co.org, because we have lots of jobs that are open. We have resources on there if you're in need for food or housing, and also some really creative programs that are on there. So just take a, a moment and look at our website.
Thank you. And I just reminded everyone, once again, Quinton, we're proud of you. And everyone, meet us in there and get more cake right after this, okay? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes.